Good evening and welcome to the July 18, 2022 Rental Housing Committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code 54953E, as authorized by Resolution of the Rental Housing Committee. Please contact mvrent@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the Rental Housing Committee will participate in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legisstar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period for an item by signing up at mountainview.gov/meeting and entering webinar ID 93773068363, or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128, and entering webinar ID 93773068363. Any emails received by 5:00 PM today were forwarded to the Rental Housing Committee. Emails received after 5:00 PM will not be read during the meeting, but will be entered into the record for the meeting. The meeting is called to order at 7:03 PM. Now, we will proceed with roll call. And Jessica or Andrea, can you help me with roll call?
Okay. Committee member Ronald.
Here.
Committee member Pardo De Zella.
Present.
Committee member Rosas.
Present.
Committee member Almond.
Howdy.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Present.
Chair Haynes Livsay.
Okie dokie, we will now move to the Agenda Item 3, which is our Consent Calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the committee wishes to remove an item for discussion. The purpose of the Consent Calendar is for the committee to efficiently and quickly consider routine or administrative business items with one motion. Although committee members may remove items, it is generally not intended for the committee to have a lengthy substantive discussion on the consent calendar items. Would any member of the committee like to pull an item? Okay, seeing none. Would any member, yes, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click Raise Hand button in Zoom or press *9 on your phone. Staff will display a countdown timer on the screen. Do not see any hands. So, I will now bring the item back to the committee for action. A motion to approve the Consent Calendar should include reading the titles of the Agenda Items or the resolutions attached to Agenda Items 3.1 and 3.2. A motion to approve should include reading the following items. A motion to approve Agenda Item 3.1, approve the minutes for June 20, 2022, RHC meetings; and a motion to approve Agenda Item 3.2, approve of resolution-making findings authorizing continued remote teleconferencing meetings of the Rental Housing Committee pursuant to the Brown Act provisions as amended by Assembly Bill Number 361. And I see a hand. Vice Chair Ramos.
Thank you Chair, I move to approve the minutes to RHC meeting, June 20, 2022, and to adopt a resolution to continue virtual meetings pursuant to Brown Act provisions as amended by AB 361.
Excellent. Do I see a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, and now we can call the vote.
Committee member Pardo De Zella.
Aye.
Committee member Rosas.
Yes.
Committee member Almond.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Haynes Livsay.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. Okay. Now, we will open the meeting for oral communication from the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the committee on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the committee from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on non-agenda items? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press *9 on your phone. Staff will display a countdown timer on the screen. And I see one hand. Okay, let's upgrade Mr. Steven G to a speaker line.
Just checking if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Steven Goldstein, I am a CISSP, my certification number is 311851. And what I'm about to address is a very serious problem regards to the manner in which things are being done with the RHC. What I'm going to point out is that I've sent an email saying that there have been decisions prepared by people other than the hearing officer. Those particular people were not even in the hearing at the time, and were only basically instructed to make their decisions based on only the hearing record and not any of the evidence provided. In that case then, that hearing officer has basically done something improper, because at least in the normal courts, if a clerk is going to be writing a preliminary decision for the court, at least the clerk is present during the hearing and also is exposed to all evidence involved in the case. In this case, the situation was not happening. Second of all, the documents were not secured, meaning that they were able to be altered, especially under the circumstances where someone was not paying attention to the properties of the data file. The documents was not written by the hearing officer, it was written, in this case, this particular hearing officer had the documents written by a person by the name of, I believe, Renee Glover-Chandler and not Derek Chandler. And yet, at the same time, this was not noticed by the RHC or its staff. At the same time, because it was written by a third party and not the author, even though the author signed it, it basically invalidated the decision completely. Finally, legal IT security standards require that court documents need to be properly secured, and in fact, you cannot use your own device to do the work unless you may be a court stenographer. But any work that's done on the cases has been done through equipment and software and hardware that is actually in the ownership of the city. In this case, it definitely appears that that's not the case. And so, on top of it, I'm simply saying, in fact, there's no IT security audit on its own record. Where are they? They need to be performed annually. They also need to be done by a certified professional, either a Comp TIA Security Plus Professional or an ISC Squared Security Professional. In this case, it does appear like none of the above has been happening. And again, in fact, it really appears at this point in time that you may have a very serious problem. If it turns out that all decisions, for example, signed by the hearing officer Derek Chandler can be identified as being written by a third party, then all of his decisions have to be disqualified, and they have to be redone all over again. In any case, any decision that is signed by a party not writing the case decision cannot do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Do I have any other public comment during the open comments? Okay. Moving right along, we will now move to Agenda Item 6.1, the Appeal of Decision Regarding Okay. With regards to this petition, the Rental Housing Committee in hearing the appeal is acting in a quasi-judicial fashion and will conduct the hearing in accordance with those standards. The hearing is being held pursuant to Section 1711J of the CSFRA and Chapter 5, Section H of the Regulations adopted by the RHC. In accordance with Section 1711 of the CSFRA, any party to a petition who disagrees with the hearing officer's decision may appeal to the full RHC for review. In this case, the tenant Iris Martinez filed for a downward adjustment to rent, and the property owner submitted an appeal. Accordingly, the property owner is referred to as the appellant and will present first. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the procedure set forth in Chapter 5 of the Regulations. The RHC will first take comments from any member of the public who is not a party to the petition who wishes to speak on the matter. Comments are limited to three minutes. Staff will provide a report to RHC regarding the appeal and tentative appeal decision. The appellate landlord will be given 10 minutes uninterrupted to make a presentation and arguments. After the appellate landlord has completed their presentation, the respondent tenant will be given 10 minutes uninterrupted to make a presentation and arguments. If there is more than one petitioner that wishes to address RHC, the petitioners collectively must determine how to allocate their 10 minutes among themselves. Upon conclusion of both presentations, each party will be given up to five minutes for rebuttal, with the appellate landlord presenting rebuttal first. Upon conclusion of the parties' rebuttals, the RHC members will be given a chance to ask questions of staff first, and then of the appellant and the respondent. The RHC will then deliberate and make its decision. During deliberations, it is likely that RHC members will have additional questions for staff. Additional questions for the appellant and the respondent will generally not be allowed. RHC members are required to disclose any communications that they have had with any of the parties to the petition or the party's representatives, and the substance of those communications since the date the petition was filed. The decision of the RHC is to be based on the record presented to the hearing officer. an RHC member that is not okay, seeing no hands. We will now proceed with the hearing. Are there members of the public who are not parties to the petition who would like to speak? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press *9 on your phone. The speech timer will be displayed on the screen. You will be given three minutes. If there are more than 15 speakers, we will reduce the time allowed for each speaker to two minutes in accordance with our rules in Chapter 3 of our Regulations. Do I have any members of the public that wish to comment on the appeal who are not members of the appeal? Okay, seeing none, I believe that staff has a presentation for us.
Yes, thank you, Chair Haynes Livsay. So, we are here tonight to review the tentative appeal decision, which you have all received, and either accept that appeal decision or modify the appeal decision with instructions to staff citing appropriate evidence in the record. So, we just wanted to go over your role and the scope of the decision, and sort of give a little background, and then talk about the schedule for the appeal hearing, which the Chair has already done, and then discuss the petition and the appeal. Next slide. So, first of all, as the RHC sitting as the Appeal Board, as the Chair said, you are acting in a quasi-judicial fashion. You are looking at the appeal and the hearing record and the hearing decision to see whether it's supported by substantial evidence. You're not reweighing evidence or relitigating issues. We are also not looking at new evidence. What's before you is the evidence that was in the record when the hearing officer made the decision. The decision being supported by substantial evidence doesn't mean that it's the conclusion you would have come to or that I would have come to, but more, is there sufficient evidence in the record to support that decision? You also have, under the CSFRA, the option to conduct a de novo review of the decision, and we are not recommending the de novo review. Next slide. A de novo review would essentially mean that you are reopening the entire record, allowing new evidence to be presented. All the evidence would be presented again to you, testimony would be taken. It would be a significant undertaking for this committee, and the record was deemed sufficient after a review of the record that we don't believe there's a need. Next slide. So, just to be clear how this all works, so the petition defines the scope of the hearing officer's decision. So, the petitioner specified the issues in that petition, and the hearing officer decided on each of those issues. The appeal defines the scope of your review. So, not all issues of a decision are always appealed, and in this case, not all of the issues were appealed. So, all you are looking at is those elements that were appealed. If a portion of the decision was not appealed, then that portion of the decision is final. Next slide. So, this is just a visual of the process. We get the petition, we have a decision, and an appeal. Your options are to affirm or modify the decision or remand it to the hearing officer for an additional review. If you affirm or modify, then the decision becomes final, and the aggrieved party, if they're unhappy with the decision, can challenge the decision in court. If the decision is remanded to the hearing officer, then it's not final until that a new decision is issued, another opportunity to appeal is given. So, there can be multiple appeals. In this case, we are not recommending remand, so if you accept the tentative decision, it will become final. Next slide, please. So, as the Chair went over, your regulations set out the process for the appeal hearing. The appellant, which is the landlord in this case, will go first. The respondent, which is the tenant, will then have an opportunity to give a presentation. Each party will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. You all will be given an opportunity to ask questions of both of staff and of the appellant and the respondent, and then you will be given the opportunity to deliberate and make a decision. So, the petition you have before you is a petition for a downward adjustment from the tenant. The petition raises a variety of habitability and maintenance issues related to the unit at 1802 Hickon Avenue, Unit Number 2. The petition also raises an issue regarding subletting, that the tenant requested to replace a roommate, and that request was denied. And I'm just going to say throughout this discussion, we are going to use subletting and replacing a roommate interchangeably, because the terms in our regulations really have the same effect. So, the RHC accepted the petition on March 22. The hearing officer conducted a pre-hearing telephonic conference on April 7. The hearing officer then issued a written order and summary of that pre-hearing conference on April 8. And I do want to go back, because what's not in this chart, there also, the hearing officer did order an inspection of the unit, and that was conducted on March 15, and an inspection report was issued by the city's department on March 15. And the hearing officer did accompany the inspector. So, the hearing date was set, and that unfortunately is a typo, it said on April 12, the hearing date was held on April 20. There were interpreters at the hearing, both for Mandarin and Spanish, to assist with tenant witnesses and some of the parties. The hearing officer closed the hearing record at the end of the hearing and delivered a decision on May 16. A timely appeal was submitted by the appellate landlord on May 25, and you were hearing the appeal on July 18. So, the decision made several findings of fact and of law, essentially boiled down to its basic terms. The decision found that the tenant was entitled to a downward adjustment of rent due to unsafe conditions in the bathroom, particularly the bathroom floor. The decision also found that the tenant was entitled to a downward adjustment of rent due to ceiling cracks in the living room and bedroom ceiling, and that the tenant was entitled to a one-time reduction in rent if the toilet was not replaced as part of the bathroom work that needed to be done. Decision also found that the tenant had not met her burden of proof with regard to a request for a downward adjustment due to mold in the apartment, and similarly, the tenant had not met her burden of proof with regard to a downward adjustment related to the need for the carpet to be replaced. Finally, the decision found that the tenant was not entitled to a downward adjustment because of the landlord's refusal to allow a subtenant, in part because, or primarily mainly because the tenant had not met the noticing requirements in the RHC's Regulations with regard to a request or sublet or a replacement roommate. So, the tenant was awarded a downward adjustment in rent in the amount of $291.40 for the bathroom subflooring issue commencing on March 1, 2022, until the building inspector approved the repairs. The hearing officer made a determination of the amount based on dividing the total rent by the number of rooms in the building, in the apartment. That would give you, there were five rooms, so $291.40 amounts to one-fifth of the rent, and finding that because the bathroom subflooring issue was so significant, the room was essentially unusable. So, she awarded a downward adjustment for the full amount. She awarded the downward adjustment starting March 1, because based on the evidence in the record, she found that the property owner had notice of the subflooring issue as early as early December. The hearing officer made a determination that it was reasonable to grant the landlord 90 days to make progress on the repairs, as of the date of the decision, no repairs had been made. So, the decision finds that commencing March 1, the tenant was entitled to the downward adjustment. The decision also awarded the tenant a downward adjustment of rent in the amount of $29.10 per month related to the ceiling cracks. Once again, the hearing officer looked at the total value of each room. She found that the cracks didn't make the rooms unusable, but that they did cause significant worry that there would be ceiling falling in, and therefore awarded the tenant 5% of the value of each room per month. And then finally, the tenant was awarded a one-time reduction of rent of $650, but only if the toilet was not replaced as part of the other bathroom repairs. Next slide. So, the landlord has raised three issues on appeal. The first is that the downward adjustment for the bathroom and ceiling should not commence until 90 days after the hearing officer's decision, that essentially the landlord didn't have ample notice before then. The landlord also raises that the subleasing was not an appropriate matter for the petition, and then finally, that the city has not been fair and neutral in hearing this case. Next slide. So, the tentative appeal decision upholds the hearing officer's decision in the entirety. After a review of the entire record, the evidence supports that the landlord was aware of the bathroom and ceiling issues as early as late November. In the first meeting that the landlord had with the tenant, the issues were raised. The tenant was not awarded, as I said earlier, a downward adjustment related to subletting, so there was really no issue to appeal here. The decision does discuss the appropriate process for requesting subletting and the appropriate requirements for property owners in considering a subletting request, but it does not make any decision with regard to the subletting. And then finally, a review of the hearing record does not support findings of bias or unfairness on the part of the hearing officer. Next slide. So, your options are to consider the tentative appeal decision once again, and either accept that appeal decision or modify that appeal decision with instructions to staff citing to the appropriate evidence in the record. So, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Karen. Appellant landlord, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom if you would like to speak, and staff will temporarily promote you to a panelist. The speech timer will be displayed on the screen. You will have 10 minutes to present.
Chair Haynes Livsay, I do have a quick point of order.
Yes.
Were we going to have translators in this meeting?
I, yeah, on key.
We do have a translator that's on the line right now, Eileen Lee, in the event that the appellate landlord wants the translation.
Should we promote Ms. Lee along with the appellate landlord, just in case, so that it doesn't take any of her time?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea.
Hi. Yeah, I'll be speaking on behalf of the appellants, if that's okay. I, in this case, is Ms. Chiang's point of view. So, we appeal that starting the rent cut from March 1 is not necessary, nor is it reasonable, as we've finished repairs as soon as the city and tenant allowed us to within 90 days. Everybody has the right to habitable conditions, and that's a human right, which is exactly why we respond promptly to fix the problem as soon as we can. Right when the permit, given April 22, and Ms. Martinez, allowed us to do so, we began repairing the bathroom, passing the inspection on July 7. Once professionals diagnose a problem and we know how to take an action, we have never delayed. But fixing any problem requires that window, 90 days, and we contend that it should start count starting May 18, the day of the hearing decision. So, let's walk through the timeline in detail. For context, Ms. Martinez has lived here for over 20 years. We purchased this property last year, November 22. As landlords, we have not raised rent. Another tenant, Ms. Manriquez, has testified in the original hearing that we have responded promptly to requests for repairs whenever notified, unlike the previous landlord. The same is also true here. We've done it as fast as we can following the city's timing. We always uphold our duty and act to help as soon as a problem is known. Unfortunately, in December, unlike the hearing said previously, we were not well-informed of an urgent subfloor issue. Otherwise, we have responded, as with other issues. The hearing result quotes "the respondents had notice of the subfloor condition in the bathroom as at least as early as December" is simply untrue, because we did not know back then. Additionally, during December, we were already actively working in her bathroom, solving its other problems, for example spraying mold spots and fixing the toilet on the days December 7 and January 27. And this is, you know, evidenced by text messages. We were actively problem-solving there already. Amidst all of this, Ms. Martinez mentioned the floor issue through emphasizing how ugly it looked. As an aesthetic problem, not a habitable issue. So, as a layman and not professionals, we had no way to predict that it would be so much worse later, especially as we were already busy urgently improving the living conditions from previous decades of neglect. So, in December, we'd only experienced a brief walk-through of the bathroom, less than 30 minutes. And back then, the floor actually had had an extra layer of tile on top that she had added herself. In December, it was a totally different feeling, much stronger, more stable, and not all as squishy. Fast forward three months, she peels off the tiles in February to reveal the reality of the problem. And then in March, the city inspector and I both walked it. This feeling was completely different to December, and we realized the damage was really bad. Again, since I'm not a professional, I have no idea it was that extreme of a problem back then while we were busy spraying mold, until she reported it in February, and it was much more obvious without the extra layer. I apologize for not being aware of it earlier, but I simply don't have the expertise to make a professional judgment in that time. Back in December, I even asked my contractor, a professional, and even he said he cannot identify any issue just by merely walking on the tiles. Part of Ms. Martinez's evidence is a testimony from her licensed contractor, Mr. Earl. He testified in March that the floor felt like, or he testified from his inspection in March, that the floor felt like, quote, "you're walking on a trampoline." However, the important thing here is the timing. His inspection happened in March, after she reported the issue and had peeled off the tiles. Yet, the writing of the tentative appeal decision places his testimony right next to her November squishy observation, which is very vague, and it only specifies the timestamp of November, not March. So, it lumps the two together, which is misleading and untrue, because it makes it seem like the professional diagnosis was at the same time in November, December, month, month earlier, when in fact it happened in March, after she ripped off the tile, and her February report had already kick-started the process. So, let's be clear on the timeline, this damage has occurred over years and years without petitions to previous landlords at all, before we bought the property. Before we bought the property and the cosmetic complaints of December are not a formal diagnosis. If we had known, we definitely would have helped. So it was February eighth when she officially reported the bathroom floor issue through text. The text is what actually brought the issue to our attention all of a sudden and kickstarted the process. We're happy, we're happy she did, so we can all work together to make the conditions livable. According to the Mountain View website, the landlord has the right to lawful entry if they give twenty-four hours notice. So we should have the right to enter for necessary repairs or services. However, after this report, during February and March, we tried our best to check the bathroom several times to help, but Ms. Martinez barred entry. On March second, she texted quote, I was told I can refuse to have anyone come in until the inspector comes. I'd rather take care of it through the city. Another text, I'd rather wait for them to tell me what to do next, end quote. So we agreed to wait for the city. I respected her wishes. But in reality, if Ms. Martinez had allowed access back then, the issue could have been solved earlier and the delay was not on our part. So until the city inspector accompanied us on March fifteenth, we couldn't enter. This is the first time after the report that I could check the bathroom and this delay was again out of our control. Barred from lawful entry, I couldn't even enter, much less diagnose the problem before this. Nor could I get a permit for repairs at this time. So how would it be possible beforehand? Again, March first as a start for rent cuts is absolutely unreasonable. March eighteenth, we received inspection report. Finally, with the professional diagnosis, we could start. Yet the city requires another step, a permit and for Ms. Martinez to move out first in order to begin repairs. April twenty-second, we prepared, we received this permit. We did this as promptly as we can. Then on May eighteenth, we received the hearing decision. Since Ms. Martinez wanted to wait to, quote, take care of it through the city through her texts. This date should be the actual start point for the repair window. Only after this decision could we know what to do next about the problem through the city's process. So she wanted to wait for them. And using the city's logic, after identifying a problem, three months is the ninety-day window you guys talked about is a reasonable period to fix it. According to this timeline, the deadline would be August seventeenth. And in fact, our actual working period for repairs turned out to be ten days, ending July seventh, well in advance of that. So after receiving the decision in mid-May, it took several back and forth between us, contractors, Ms. Martinez and the city to start. She told us that she could find a place to live on the first of June, but later she postponed it to June twenty-seventh, delaying almost a month. The delay is against out of our control. And if she had moved out on the original date, June first, we could have finished repairs by June twelfth instead of July seventh, almost a full month earlier. Why should rent be cut during this period when Ms. Martinez was the one that delayed repairs for several weeks? On July seventh, we passed final inspection for the bathroom and popcorn ceiling. After remodeling the entire bathroom with a new vanity, new shower, new toilet, new floor and new plumbing system. As we have shown, the reality of the problem wasn't identified till March, when Mr. Earl, who is Ms. Martinez's source inspected without a knowledge, he came. And also the city inspector came with our knowledge. Either way, both professionals were in March. Once they identified it, we must have a reasonable window for action, ninety days. As we've shown, we finished repairs with plenty of time to spare. We've always acted as soon as the city allows and delays were out of our control. Thus, a rent card starting munch, a rent cut starting March first is unreasonable when we've acted as soon as we can. Furthermore, the leasing agreement has been very clear that subleasing isn't allowed. See page nine, number thirty. Yet the decision alleges that we, quote, refused to allow a petitioner to replace her roommate. The roommate was never legal in the first place, thus the replacement would also be illegal and refusing is simply the law. For the record, she's had two roommates in the past without ever making a written request or getting getting written permission from high board chief. Who was a landlord during this time. On May twenty-sixth, we submitted a testimony from HiBo as evidence where he wrote, quote, I definitely did not give permission to her for subleasing and writing. Not even verbally, end quote. Why was this testimony not mentioned in the tentative appeal decision at all? Let's make it very clear that under the current lease, her rent stays absolutely the same, increasing by zero. It will stay the same as long as she doesn't change anything. Yet the tentative decision interprets my words wrongly as, quote, a rent increase of fourteen hundred for a new roommate, which would nearly double the rent. One, oh, end quote. One, this falsely makes an imaginary scenario reality. And two, her rent doesn't increase at all under the current lease, so it's a false assumption. This completely distorted my words when this example was only intended as an imaginary scenario. For comparison, since the current market price is indeed thirty-two hundred. It was just an example of a lower than market price offer for a potential roommate in the future, should Ms. Martinez seek to add one legally. So let's make it very clear that under the current lease, her rent will stay absolutely the same and increase by zero. We all agree, we want to repair everything and make it habitable as possible. And you know, have a good landlord-tenant relationship. Nothing will change unless she chooses so. So in conclusion, no rent cut is necessary as we have finished repairs as soon as the city and Ms. Martinez have allowed us to do so. And we've responded very promptly in every situation to the best of our ability. Once we have all the knowledge from profession, from professionals, not just. Vague notices. And also, no sublease is allowed without a landlord's written permission according to the leasing agreement. So replacement of a roommate is not a legal guarantee nor requirement. But that's also a separate issue than this issue, but I guess both were added on the petition, so we're talking about it now. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, respondent tenant, please click the raise hand button in Zoom if you would like to speak. And staff will temporarily promote you to as a panelist. If you need translation services, we will promote the translator as well. The speech timer will be displayed on the screen. You will have ten minutes once you're promoted.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, oh, hi. Um, so there's so much to, let me see, where do I start? So yeah, I've been, I've lived there in this apartment for, since I was eight, nine. And I did not become kind of responsible for it until about four years ago. Ms. Shang mentions that the. That I was saying that the bathroom has a cosmetic problem. I disagree with that because I had, that's why I put those fake tiles in the first place because I thought, oh, let me just, you know. Put something new. I put, I went to Walmart and bought those tiles. So I think that if it was a just a cosmetic thing, I would have done the same thing. I think I would, I would not mind pay forty dollars to, you know, be in a pleasant, something that's pleasant. I, before she came became the landlord, I text the previous landlord telling him, hey, you know. These tiles are kind of, I put the first tiles in. And then I text them because I was so used to making all these changes myself and always paying out of pocket. Just because I didn't really care or mind doing so. Until, you know, talking to friends who are older than me and have more experience being. In apartments, you know. We're like, hey, you should just mention it to him. So I mentioned it to him that I was gonna change them. And I said, oh, you do mind reimbursing me this time? And he said, sure. I never did because I realized that the, the floor was kind of squishy. And I thought it's not just a cosmetic thing. That's the reason that I didn't change them. And I even thought myself like, oh, I wonder if I can just do it myself, like YouTube. How to put, you know, the kind of the stronger ones in. But I was scared of doing so because I thought, well, it's not mine. What if I mess it up trying to do all these YouTube things? So when she came in to fix the bathroom problem, the mold. She came up with the spray and sprayed the mold and I mentioned about, I mentioned the floor to her. And I. I remember her telling me, well, if you want me to make any changes, you know, I'm gonna raise your rent. I have to raise your rent. And I said, yeah, but you know, can we like, can you ask your contractor to check, you know, it feels weird. It looks weird. I don't know if there's something. That's, I was scared of mold just because the apartment sold. And she just kind of was saying, oh, 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 like she wasn't responding to what I was asking. And I saw the lack of interest in her part and I understand because. She just had purchased this building. So I, I, I understand why it's like, oh, let me just, you know. Kind of just waited out. So I, I, yeah, but I think that there's, there's proof of, of even her saying, you know what? The contractor like it, it's too small of a project for him to even come and, you know, take a look at it. I didn't ask her to change it immediately. I just can tell me, can we see what, can we even just kind of see what the problem might be? And. In regards to the roommate situation, I know that in her appeal thing, she said that I secretly had a roommate. I, with the previous landlord. I think his lack of having done anything or said anything, he never made, gave me a notice. He never told me that I needed to ask permission, a written permission. I didn't know this. I lived with my parents there since I was eight. I just all of a sudden, you know. Overnight was the one that was responsible for these things. I did not know that I needed to do that. And I think he never verbally told me that there was a problem because. You know, it, it was two people leaving, one person coming in. So instead of three people, it was two people. There's also the problem that my parents were the original lease owners. And I took, because I speak English and I was getting older and I, I, you know, the, my landlord saying, hey, can you remove my parents and leave just me? Not knowing that that was gonna cause me a problem. And not knowing that him doing so was not, from what I'm hearing, not sure I would like to ask. It wasn't done the proper way. So the next lease was just my name. My father never agreed to it. He never bought his deposit back or transferred. He never signed anything. He was just removed over overnight. Because of a, a stupid, I guess, decision or, you know, something that I did without being knowledgeable about what need. That it was not the right thing to do or the proper way. So because of that, now this stope or certificate or did now the lease is just in my name. Which I don't think is. I don't think is right because, like I said, my, I, I, I removed my parents. They did not ask to be removed. So they should still be able to be on there and I should still, I still feel like. I'm not asking for two people to come in and live with me in a two-bedroom apartment. I'm just asking for one person to come in. Because I think it's. I think it's, you're losing three people and you're, it's just one person coming in. And like I said, the original people on the lease were renewed without their consent and without their approval. And in regards to. Miss, so once I. I denied, you know, her coming in. It was, I asked the city first, whoever I was talking to, I said, hey, you know, I'm, I'm basically. I'm scared of her coming in and maybe doing things in an improper way. Before the city is able to come and take a look because I kind of got that from her saying, hey, I don't know if like. I, I think I have to raise your rent or I have to, you know. Just the misinformation and how she has said she's a first-time landlord too, and I'm basically kind of like a first-time tenant. Because with the previous landlord, I think they themselves said that. My. The person who, the neighbor who said the previous landlord never really did anything. So I did, I was not aware of that I could even go to the city and ask for help and say, hey, you know, how does this go about? What can I do? What are my rights? And I know that it's very unfortunate timing for her that as soon as she comes in, I'm like, okay, well, you know, if, if we're gonna, you know. Have to be difficult about this, then I have to go ask what, what I can do, what are my rights and what, you know. Inform myself because it's like as though I kind of inherited this apartment, not knowing at all what I was supposed to do. I just paid the rent and that was it. And. I was having a hard time. Trying to find a place to stay because I have, my dad is actually with me temporarily. Because he comes and goes from the country and right now he has a health issue and he has a surgery appointment. That he has been postponed. So I jumped the gun by saying, hey, I think I could move out by June first. And then I didn't really hear back and I realized, oh, I shouldn't have said that. That was a little too soon because the decision was in May and I was trying to, you know, kind of accelerate myself, so. And then she texts back four days before. Saying, hey, can we start in four days? And I realized, no, you know what? I think I do need a bit more time. And I said, well, let's just make it July, so it's an even month. And then she said, you know, we don't have to. And then I, I said, okay, let's do. June twenty-seven, I think three weeks will be enough time for me to not only take care of my dad, but work and like find accommodations and everything. And also, she told me that I can leave my things locked in a bedroom that was not going to be worked on. But then a day before the inspection, she says, hey, can you give me the key to the bedroom or can we move the things outside? But she told me repeatedly that she was not responsible for my things. So I said, no, I can't give you the key and, or I can't just. You know, allow you to move things when you repeatedly told me that you were not responsible for my things. I think that would be very dumb of me to, to kind of just do that. So that's, that's my side. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so appellate landlord, you now have five minutes to rebut any statements made by the respondent. Please limit your comments to rebuttal rather than repeating information already presented.
Hi, so the landlords do not know, or I do not know what happened before we bought this property. As the inspection report was two hundred pages long and not translated. But it was also a misunderstanding due to the language barrier when Ms. Martinez was asking, like, miss. I mean, I thought Ms. Martinez was asking for a cosmetic change in the floor. So that's the reason I suggested an increase of rent because we thought it was a cosmetic issue. It wasn't obvious that it was squishy. There was a layer over, we are not professionals. Again, even the contractor could not detect a significant issue without like a significant opening up the whole floor back in December. And back then, we were still spraying mold and fixing the toilet. Additionally, on May twenty-sixth, we submitted a test ceremony from HiBo Chi to the city. HiBo wrote in quotations in that email, I definitely did not give permission to her for subleasing and writing. As a matter of fact, I talked to her once and pointed out that sublease is not allowed. So you can't, like, he talked to Ms. Martinez about not allowing roommates. The effective lease is currently between Ms. Martinez and HiBo and we replaced him as landlord. You can sign a new lease with us as landlord, but we won't change any terms of the lease. It is still your name on the lease. And of course, you can ask for one person to be added to your lease, but again, very clear in the S double, that was, will require a new lease. That's the law under the current lease. It's only your name. And additionally, we asked for the key to the bedroom because that is a fire hazard. It's illegal to withhold the bedroom keys from the landlord, especially in like. An apartment's, like, in the property. And, yeah, and no lock should be installed in any bedroom within a unit. But Ms. Martinez installed it them herself without giving a copy to landlord. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And respondent tenant, you now have five minutes to rebut any statements made by the appellate. Please limit your comments to rebuttal rather than repeating information already presented.
Thank you. Yeah, so the. The bathroom situation. I think that even with, I mean, even with the layer that it had, yes, it was stronger because it was way worse when it was taken off. But it was still, it was enough for me to say, hey, something's wrong. And I asked, you know, I asked twice. If her landlord, if her person can come in. And this person who came in and fixed stuff, I mean, he fixed stuff like he filled holes in the wall and he didn't even sand it. Like that kind of let me know, oh, you know, I don't know what kind of handyman this is. I never said anything because I just thought, you know what, whatever. I'll stand it myself, but it was just, it was done very like not caring. So I thought, well, if he did that, not kind of that way. I'm sure that he's not even gonna care to even see what the floor looks like. And in regards to the testimony, I know that that's like new, you know, that shouldn't even be used. But I think his lack of. Action in the past three years. Action in the past three or four years speaks a lot more than any words or testimony that he can give. Because there's no proof of no email, no letter, no nothing of him telling me that he was in disagreement. With my my roommate. And. When they mentioned I had I had two roommates, they they were not in there at the, they they they. They missed each other, basically. So one left, one came. So it was still one person. And in regards to the lock, I'm happy to take locks off of the bedroom. I had them, I installed them when I was a teenager and I just didn't want my parents to come in my room. But I live there alone and I don't mind changing the locks. In this case. They. They said that she told me you can put your thing, you can lock the things in your bedroom. Or take them to storage or lock them in your bedroom while everything is being worked on. So of course I took the option of leaving them locked in the bedroom because, you know, it was, it was. It was cheaper for me to do that than to have to haul everything if the work was, if the bedroom was not going to be worked on in the first place. And then, you know, like one day before she says, hey, I I need to open the bedroom and I was not able to. So but I am, I'm more than happy to take locks off because I don't use them and. But yeah, in that in that in that scenario, that's what happened. I was told that I can keep my things in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, RHC members, do you have any questions for staff? Don't be shy, everyone. Committee member hosts.
I just have a question for, yeah, for staff. I understand, I could be wrong, but this is what I'm asking. My understanding is that. The residents have the right to do. As they please in their apartment, right? Or am I wrong?
I I think that needs a little more clarity. I mean, you can't do anything you want in the apartment. And, you know, typically the lease might have requirements if you want to make alterations, et cetera.
Right. I mean, as long as it's not defacing the apartment, but. I don't know. Okay, so. Do you question? So your answer is?
Well, I don't think that you can say a tenant can do anything they want. You know, they are renting, they don't own the building, they can't make significant alterations. They need to get the landlord's permission for making changes in the unit.
Okay, thank you.
Committee member, pardon his all.
My question is for Ms. Deng rather than staff.
Oh, we were doing staff first and then we'll do the appellate and the respondent, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Hold your question. Committee member, Grimwall.
Sure. My question is for staff. What what evidence? Did the hearing officer submit for the basis that the. The claim that the floor was squishy was communicated in February? Were there texts submitted or?
Yes, so there was a variety of evidence that was submitted to the hearing officer. Including testimony of both the petitioner and the respondent, that there were conversations. The respondent did testify that they were told that it was squishy, they didn't understand what it meant. And that their contractor had told them that they couldn't tell them what the problem was without pulling the floor up. And they didn't want to spend that money. So there were also text messages from the petitioner asking if the contractor was going to come. Had they gotten a quote from the contractor? The responses were the job's too small. We're not going to get a response. So there was a pretty significant amount of evidence that there had been a back and forth about the floor.
Okay, and and that back and forth happened largely in February?
No, that back and forth happened in December. So the hearing officer's decision was that once they were noticed. It was reasonable to allow them 90 days to make progress on the repairs. So she didn't start the downward adjustment until March 1st. On the basis that they were notified in late November and early December of the floor condition.
Okay, thank you. And that at that time in December, that was the current owner, not not the prior.
That was the current owner. All of this was with the current owner.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Ramos.
More of a scoping issue, the things that we are looking at in terms of our direction is. All right, the downward adjustment due to the unsafe condition on the bathroom floor. The downward adjustment due to ceiling cracks, the one-time reduction about the toilet, downward adjustment. Or the non downward adjustment. Due to not having enough information about the mold. But basically, these are the list of things that we're going to go over. And then we are going to either choose to uphold, deny, or send back to to hearing officer.
Yes, so the landlord raised three issues on appeal. The first issue was that the downward adjustments primarily related to the bathroom, but there was reference to the ceiling cracks. Should not have started on March 1st, but should have started only 90 days after the hearing decision, which would have put it at August 16. So I think that appeal decision is really, was there substantial evidence in the record to support the hearing officer's decision? That March 1st was a reasonable date. The second issue raised by the landlord was an issue regarding subletting. And. This one is a little bit more confusing. There was a lot of information in the appeal about subletting. But essentially, the hearing officer's decision did not grant a downward adjustment on subletting. And the decision just essentially says. The petitioner needs to comply with the CSFR regulations and state law. And the respondent needs to comply with the CSFRA petition or regulation and state law. That isn't relevant to the ultimate decision that there was no downward adjustment. So the appeal is apparently wanting us to make a finding. That the tenant is not allowed to sublet, but that was not the hearing officer's decision. And then the final appeal element was that the decision was unfair and biased. So those are the three issues that were raised.
Okay, so when it comes to the the summary of the decision. The main thing we're probably talking about in terms of narrowing the scope down from. That was a lot of information that we learned in the last 20 minutes. Is really, was the the date correct? And therefore, the amount of reduction downward adjustment, correct?
Is that right? That right, was the time period based on the evidence you heard tonight? The downward adjustment, assuming that the city has signed off and the inspections of the work. Would have been in effect from March 1st to July 7th. So was that the correct time period for the downward adjustment of $120 a month? I think with some change.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to clarify everything through.
Do we have any other questions for staff? Okay, I have a question for staff. So I am interested, and I don't know that our regulations actually speak to this. But for a tenant to request a landlord's assistance with maintenance of the property. What is the burden of proof on the tenant? Because it sounds like in this case. The tenant mentioned to the landlord that she felt there was a maintenance issue. And the landlord effectively said, well, my professional can't diagnose it. And I'm not going to spend the money to have them do the work that would be necessary to diagnose it. Because it is fairly invasive work to pull out a floor. So there must not be an issue. But do landlords have the ability to disregard tenant? Concerns around maintenance in that fashion? Or is that what our petition process is for?
So that is what your petition process is for. So under your regulations, the tenant has to provide reasonable notice and the landlord, I mean, this is in the CSFRA. And your regulations. And the landlord has to be given a reasonable time to make the repairs. So there's no requirement that notice be given in any particular way. So this was, the hearing officer's job was to weigh the evidence, was notice given? Did the landlord have appropriate notice? And, you know, I'll just reiterate in reviewing the hearing record. The landlord did acknowledge that the tenant did tell them about the floor in their very first meeting.
Thank you. Okay, do I have any other questions for staff before I go back to committee member partizella for a question to the appellant or the respondent?
As to Ms. Deng.
Go ahead.
So my question is, Deng, is can you give some examples of why you believe there was bias on behalf of the hearing officer?
We believe there was bias because they interpreted many of our statements wrongly. But we can retract that statement. Yeah, it was just mostly because, like I said earlier, many statements have been interpreted wrong. As well as the subletting, which is, as we've mentioned many times, illegal in the first place. So it keeps on being brought up, assuming that it would be legal and assuming that a roommate is a right. When Iris Martinez is the only name on the estable. And. Like regardless of, I guess, whatever agreement she had with the previous landlord, maybe tacit. When we came in at this timing, November 22nd, a week before December. Completely new landlords to a fourplex. Yeah, it was just really obvious to us that her name was the only one on. The estable and if a roommate is considered a guaranteed right in this hearing, you know. It just felt like there was bias because a lot of things were being very misunderstood. Additionally, with the rent assumption that we would increase the rent by 1,400 when that was an imaginary scenario. And it twisted our words into thinking that was reality. I don't have other really great examples of bias as of right now. I think the bias is a moot point. We don't want to make you feel like you're. We don't want to make you feel like you're being unfair to us. We want, obviously, that's not really nice to anyone involved. But and I am Ms. Young's daughter, by the way. I feel like as her daughter, like there has been some language, a lot of language barrier problems that have caused miscommunications and misunderstandings. I feel like as landlords, they've done the best that they can with the knowledge that they can. In December, it was a week after they bought the property and didn't know anything about floors and were already actively fixing many problems. So I don't know. I don't think you guys, that that is just the reason back then.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Ramos, do you have a question for the appellate landlord or respondent tenant?
Just a quick one for the appellate landlord. I I think you may have misspoke, but you mentioned that you had an inspection but didn't read it prior to acquiring the property. If was that, did I mishear that? I think I might have misheard that.
Yeah, there was just an inspection report that was 200 pages long. We read it, but obviously, like, it was 200 pages long and with a language barrier, things could have been missed very easily. Because it was all in English and very new landlords to duplex. And also that inspection report was not ordered from us.
I'm not sure.
Oh, and that inspection report was ordered by another buyer, not us. So it wasn't part of our property buying anything. It was just an additional resource.
Okay, committee member Almond, do you have a question for the appellate landlord or respondent tenant?
Actually, I'm out of order, I think. Because I have a question regarding the subtenancy for for staff. It's my understanding from my reading of the appeal decision. That the hearing officer decided that the issue of subtenancy was not going to be settled in this case. Am I right? So that's, that's not part of this decision. So even though we're talking about it, it's it's not part of the decision. Am I right?
That that is correct. The hearing officer found that the tenant had not met the requirements of your regulation. Before the decision could, any decision could be made, the tenant needs to meet those requirements.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Do I have any other questions for the appellate landlord or the respondent tenant or for staff? See one, Vice Chair Ramos.
I I think I see Ms. Deng with her hand up on something, maybe never, Ryan, I thought she wanted to say something.
I think she gave it the thumbs up.
Oh, no, 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 I think she wanted to say something quick and I'm very curious to see what she wants to say.
Yeah, we agree that we have said many times that the subleasing is also irrelevant to this. However, since it was mentioned in the tentative appeal decision very recently, we also decided to rebut it in our appeal to that. So we have long said it was irrelevant to this decision. But because it keeps getting brought in, for example, with the rent misinterpretation, the doubling rent misinterpretation. From our example scenario about subleasing, that was brought into the tentative appeal decision for this hearing. So we're responding to it now by also reiterating for, I think, the second or third time that subleasing is not legally allowed. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Yeah, can I just clarify? So it was not inappropriate for the hearing officer to consider subleasing. It was part of the petition and she made a decision. But her decision was that she was not making a finding with regard to the subleasing and awarding a downward adjustment. So it was completely appropriate with regard to the hearing officer decision. In terms of the appeal. Given that the hearing officer essentially found that until the tenant made the appropriate steps as required by your regulations, there was no. There was no ability for her to make a decision. It's not really an appropriate issue for an appeal. But it was appropriate for the hearing officer decision.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. It just kept being, mentions of it kept being used in the hearing justification. So that's why we felt it appropriate because it was, again, I think we felt very strongly about it. And then the misinterpretation made us want to reiterate. Since it was mentioned in the hearing officer's decision itself. So we wanted to mention it in the appeal. But in the future, yes, it should be solved in a separate case.
And I I do want to note to the chair that the appellant has been given their opportunity to present and rebut. And answer questions and this has gone beyond that.
Understandable. Do we have any final questions from the committee before we move on to deliberation? Seeing none? Okay, the RHC will now deliberate. It would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion to adopt the tentative decision. After which such motion can be discussed by the RHC. A motion to approve should include reading the following items in red. Well, it's not in red for you all, but to adopt the tentative decision to deny the appeal in its entirety and affirm in its entirety the hearing decision. Hearing officer decision. Do I see a motion? I do. Committee member Almond.
You're on mute, committee member Almond.
Thank you, thank you. I don't have the wording in front of me, but I would like to make a motion to approve the tentative appeal decision as written. Can you fill in the blanks? I'm sorry, I don't have the exact wording.
Yes, to adopt the tentative decision to deny the appeal in its entirety and affirm it in its entirety, the hearing officer decision. That is what you're motioning, right?
Yes, that's my motion.
Very good. Do I see a second?
I'm sorry, can you put up the um, the motion because it's a little confusing for me.
Sure, can we get the language up there? Is that possible?
I I don't have that language. I don't know.
I have the other slide. I have this language from the.
I have this language from the memo.
That's it. So this would be a motion to accept the tentative appeal decision, I believe, the motion.
Yes. Yes.
So do I have a second? Oh, Vice Chair Ramos.
So I will second that motion. I do have some comments, though.
Okay, would you like to make your comments?
Yeah, um, I, from reading, from what I understood reading, I, I see where the. A lot of this comes down to a failure of communication. Um, and then when that failure of communication happens, where is the responsibility of that? And to some degree, um, I understood why the, um. It kind of boggles my mind to have a tenant being like, I was here for twenty years and I'm like, under thirty. So that was, that was a interesting. Uh, scenario that I've never even thought through kind of before. Um, but it, it, there is a, a miscommunication. I understand that the landlord. Did not understand certain aspects of the law and where, at what point, um. If a tenant logs essentially a, a repair habitability issue with a landlord, at what point does a landlord responsible for, for that? Um, and that obviously takes judgment and takes time, but this is a multi-million dollar property. And I believe that it is under the landlord to, to have that kind of level of responsibility. If you're, you're, if it's a multi-million dollar property, you're, you're. Um, it's not something that you should take lightly. Um, my hope is that, that this downward adjustment is, is. It, it's temporary since all the things were fixed is my understanding. For the most part, all of it is fixed. Um. And come, once everything is up to code. Um, it is just really tragic that things really couldn't be communicated well enough. That, um, that a tenant felt that they needed the city to come in to prove to the landlord. That there's something was wrong because they, because it was, uh, not able to communicate neither, neither party really. Uh, knew how to communicate that to each other. Um, but, uh, that is a responsibility. That you have when you own property and that is a responsibility, I feel like. I do have an expectation of, of, of people who are housing providers to have. Um, so I will, um, I support the, the appeal decision, uh, that the, um. The regular decision, I guess. Um, and I vote yes.
Great. So at this point, I'd like to call a vote since we do have a motion with a second on the table. Uh, Jessica or Andrea, could you help me or Joanne or Andrea, could you help me with the, um? Roll call, whoever wants to help me with the roll call.
Committee member Pardo De Zilla.
Hi.
Committee member Rosas.
Hi.
Committee member Almond.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Hi.
Chair Hen Lucy.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. So that affirms the hearing officer's decision. Okay, now, moving right along, we will now move to agenda item seven point one. The amendment to the CSFRA regulations, chapter two, and MHRSO regulations, chapter two. We will begin with a presentation from Sam.
Thank you. We can go to the first slide. Um, so the purpose, sorry, I think we skipped one, uh, but the purpose of this is to review and adopt amendments. Um, to the CSFRA and MHRSO regulations, chapter two. Um, to further clarify the calculation of base rent where rent concession is offered in the first month of the tenancy during the initial term of the tenancy. Next slide. Um, so to reiterate the committee's authority to, um, consider and. Uh, potentially establish these regulations, um, the CSFRA section seventeen oh nine expressly empowers. The RHC to establish rules and regulations for the administration and enforcement of the act. And the committee actually has a duty to set rents at fair and equitable levels to achieve the purposes of the act. Similarly, MHRSO section forty six point nine A. Um, empowers the committee to establish rules and regulations for the administration of the ordinance. And the committee may set rent at fair and equitable levels to achieve the purposes of the MHRSO. Um, so just a little review, this should be pretty fresh in people's minds since it was the last meeting, but nonetheless. Um, the RHC in March postponed the, um, base rent slash rent concession. Regulation consideration to obtain stakeholder input. Uh, stakeholder meetings were held with both landlords and tenants in April. Um, on May twenty third, the rental housing committee held a study session. And provided staff with additional direction regarding drafting the proposed regulations related to base rent and rent concessions. And on June twentieth, at the RHC meeting, um, you adopted amendments to regulations of the CSFRA. And MHRSO to address how base rent would be calculated in the instance where rent concessions are provided during the initial term of the tenancy. Next slide. So at the May meeting, um, the RHC took straw polls to provide staff with direction. On drafting the regulations, one of the questions for the straw polls was as follows. Should all types of rent concessions be treated in the same way when calculating base rent? Um, including the alternate committee members vote, the poll was tied three, three without the alternate's vote. The vote was three, two to treat all concessions the same. Um, based on that direction, uh, the regulations that staff drafted and that the RHC adopted. At the June twentieth meeting, treated all rent concessions the same in calculating base rent. Next slide. After the rental housing committee had adopted the regulations of the June meeting, however. Some committee members expressed some desire to consider treating differently. Rent concessions that consist solely of free or reduced rent during the first month of the tenancy. This was in consideration of the fact that, um, these, uh, types of rent concessions often help tenants. Um, when transitioning from one, um, uh, apartment or unit to another. Um, and because this, uh, conversation took place after the RHC had already considered this agenda item. Um, the, a request was made of the chair that staff review options for revising. The newly adopted regulations to treat these concessions, these, uh, first month pre-reduced rent concessions differently. And, um, staff proposes the following approach in response to that. So, um, we would add a new bullet point to subsection two B. Roman numeral two, to the CSFRA regulations and two C Roman numeral two to the MHRSO regulations. To exclude from the calculation of base rent, first month's free or discounted rent. In that instance, the first month would be defined as the first full calendar month of the initial term of the tenancy. This means that if a tenancy begins on September fifteenth, for example. A rent concession provided for the month of October would be excluded from the base right calculation. And this is sort of to just get, um, make the calculation a little bit easier. It gets a little bit complicated if you do it. Um, by thirty days or thirty-one days or however many, because the num, uh, the number of days in each month is different. And therefore the proration would be different. Um, to calculate the base rent where there is a first month concession, the initial term of the tenancy would be reduced by one month. So again, in the instance where you have a six-month lease. Um, and the first month of that lease is free, the base rent would be calculated based on the average rent actually paid by the tenant. Over five months, um, rather than the full six months. Um, in addition, uh, the amendments propose to add subsection, um, Roman numeral five. To require landlords or park owners or mobile home landlords to provide tenants or homeowners or mobile home tenants. With a notice of rent concession, which includes the type of concession that is being provided. So that means, is it? Uh, one month free, is it multiple months free? Um, is it a reduction? Uh, over the course of the entire, um, lease, is it a reduction over the part of the lease? Um, and there's a number of other options there about the types of concessions. The amount of the concession as well as the landlord's calculation of the base rent. And this is just to help, um, both landlords and tenants understand the concession. And what the impact of that concession will be on the base rent. Um, the notice would be on a form provided by the rental housing committee. Um, and this is actually not in, um, the staff report, but staff recommends that. Uh, then these notices, um, be provided starting for tendencies that begin on September first. Twenty twenty-two or thereafter, um, to give both landlords and tenants some time to adjust to these new regulations. Next slide. Um, so staff's recommendation is to review and adopt the amendments to CSFRA regulations, chapter two. And MHRSO regulations, chapter two, to further clarify the calculation of basement where rent concession is offered. In the first month of a tenancy during the initial term of the tenancy. And happy to answer any questions.
So committee, we'll move on to questions from the committee members. Who has questions? Vice Chair Ramos.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I talk about communication issues at the last item and, and a lot of this happened because of my lack of communication skills. Um, so, uh, some clarifying questions, how difficult would it be to expand from? One month to one or two or three months? Is that difficult to put in? Is that? Is there an easy way to do that? And I didn't think, oh, I'll let you answer that question first.
Um, it's not difficult. It could be done, uh, via motion. However, the committee should consider the impact. Um, so you know, expanding it from one to two to three months would sort of change. Um, the definition or would not conform necessarily to the definition. That is in the CSFRA or the MHRSO itself of the actual rent that is paid by the tenant over the initial term of the tenancy. If it were, um, excluded from the calculation of base rent and also in that instance. So if you had, for instance, a tenant who receives the first three months free in a twelve months. Um, uh, lease and their rent is a thousand dollars, then in that instance. Um, their base round would be a thousand dollars, but a tenant. Who receives a twenty-five percent reduction, although they are paying seven hundred and fifty dollars just as the other tenant. Over the course of, or that's the average of the rent that they're paying over the course of the twelve months, their base round would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. So just as an example, you would be treating some, two people who paid on average the same amount over the course of the twelve-month lease. Differently as far as the calculation of their base rent. So that's just a consideration of whether you want to do that. Um, as, uh, a committee.
And can I just add, so the intent of this was to create a very narrow exception. Um, the more we widen that exception, the more we run afoul of, uh, no longer complying with the CSFRA. And going beyond your role of crafting regulations that are consistent with the CSFRA. So, you know, we can't tell you where that line is, but you know, we think one month is reasonable. I think three months is probably going too far. Is two months too far? I can't tell you, but when we were directed to craft this, we were directed to craft something that was legal and we think one month is defensible. So that's our advice to you.
So, um, I guess a clarifying question, by, by passing this regulation, we are, we're not going back on the. The, the percentage discount for every month. So that example that you had, that's, that's not a thing anymore, right? Now, sorry.
Yeah, we're not changing that. It's just an example of how two tenants were essentially paying the same amount. For a twelve-month term would be treated really differently, the more you stretch our narrow exception.
Yeah, so someone whose, whose rent is a thousand dollars, for example, over twelve months. If you, if they were to get their first three months free, over the course of the twelve months, they're paying an average of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Similarly, a tenant whose rent is a thousand dollars but receives a twenty-five percent reduction over the entire.
They can't have that right, though, right? That's not allowed in our regulations.
So that is allowed into the regulations, it's just impacts the calculation of base rent. So in that instance, their base rent would be seven hundred and fifty dollars, whereas in the first example, their base rent would be a thousand dollars.
So we, we didn't prohibit concessions, they just get tack factored into base rent. That was your action last month.
Okay, I see, I see what you're, you're saying there. So one tenant is paying seven fifty because the landlord gave a twenty-five percent discount, but that. That not, it's not really a discount because it's the actual rent that they're paying, that is the base rent. As opposed to a landlord who has a tenant who's paying, uh, one thousand dollars a month, but they got the first. Two, three months free. So on the twelve-month aggregate, they are paying the same amount, but then one. Is, um. Has a lower base rent than the other tenant based on the free rent. But the tenants, what they're paying, um, on month five or six, if they started at the same time and they just had different things. They are paying different things. So like one tenant is paying a thousand dollars and the other tenant is paying seven fifty. And then when it comes to, when they come to their renewed release, the person at seven fifty level. Uh, that, that is the base rent that they are doing and then a thousand dollar, that's the base rent they are treating.
Right, right. The base rent is over the initial term of the tenancy. So in our example, to twelve-month term.
All right, that, um. All right, I will leave my hand out.
Many member Greenwald will sound next.
You're, you're on mute, committee member.
Uh, always classic. Um, my, my question was going to be about the noticing, actually, um, but maybe quickly, just in that example. If the person's, um. Rent, monthly rent, um, the rent they're charged is a thousand dollars per month, but they're given the one month free. Then in the thirteenth month. Their base rent would be calculated in a scenario, there is an, in the regulation that would be, that is proposed. On the thirteenth month, their base rent would still be the thousand dollars. Um, not, uh, like, uh, a smaller percentage, uh, the, a small percentage of, of what they paid.
Not, not eleven, twelves of a thousand dollars.
Correct, gotcha, okay. Thanks, I, I just wanted to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly. Um, on the noticing, uh, the. I, I like the proposal. I think my question is how are, how are we, where are we at with noticing right now? Like if, um. I, I think we, I think it'd be notice for the AGA needs to be sent to both the tenant and to us. Is that correct?
Uh, Anki, do you want to, you mean the notice of the rent increase?
So regular notices of rent increases, just the AGA does not have to be sent to the rental housing committee. But of course, they need to be sent to the tenants, otherwise they're not aware what the rent increase is. Um, copies to the rental housing committee need to be sent only when there is a banked increase.
Got it. Um. Okay, I, I, where I was trying to. Okay, I I where I was trying to, I was wondering if there's an opportunity to consolidate all into like one page, just to kind of save paper and. As you're going through determining whether notices needed, you could say, you know. Uh, the increase is this, it's, is it a bank increase? Yes or no? Is it, uh, was there a concession given? Yes or no? Almost like a worksheet for the. Um, landlord and then. Looking for a more efficient way, I think, to have the landlord work through whether they need to notice the person or not. Send a notice to, well, sorry, they always need to notice the individual and the tenant. But do they need to also notice us? And so bank decrease they would. This situation where the concession of a certain type, they would.
No, the regulation doesn't require that they give us the notice of the concession. It's a notice that's supposed to go with the rental agreement when it's signed. Um, so it's between the landlord and the tenant. But on a form that the uh, staff would prepare.
Got it. Uh, and yeah, I maybe my my final ask then is just can we consolidate that into kind of as few pages as possible?
Um, so we do not make a a formal form or uh, for the AGA increase since this needs to be done according to state law. So we're not providing an AG, a rent increase in this form.
So so there is a notice that goes with all leases at the beginning. That's just a notice of the CSFRA or the MHRSO.
All right, that's the information sheet. Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe I think committee member Grunwald is asking if this, if there has been a rent concession, can we just add it to whatever that notice is now? And it can be a checkbox. Um, I don't know that, uh, but staff might have.
I think staff can work on that as part of the notice.
Great, thank you. Uh, it would just make, uh, just be efficient, save some trees and and hopefully help um. Landlord spend less time. Uh, it'd be more clear about knowing the law. Thank you.
Committee member Almond.
You're you're on mute.
Oh, sorry.
It seems to be running.
I know, it it happens later in the night. So I, I'm glad I waited till after a committee member Grunwald spoke. Um, because. I think um. What he asked the last time we discussed this was whether this could be included in our um. Mandatory registration. Could there be an item? Um, added. Whether any concessions were ma- made and what they were. And I think that would be excellent information for us to be collecting. But the reason that I raised my hand is I really um. Think we have to stay with the spirit of CSFRA and not complicate things by one, two, three. You know, I mean, there could be, there's so many potential concessions out there. There's verbal handshakes. There's all kinds of stuff. And I I I feel like we're making a concession ourselves by even saying that we're gonna um. Allow a one month. Um, reprieve basically and allow landlords to take that one month and still have the same base rent. I personally would like to stick. To the letter of the law and uh. Use the base rent as the that which was collected during the uh, forgotten the language, but during the. Initial term of tenancy. Um. But I'll see how the vote votes.
Is there a question in there for staff?
Not really. That was more of a.
No problem, no problem. Committee member Roses, do you have a question before we go to public comment? And then we'll come back for deliberation. Don't worry.
So it is a question. Okay. So um, will this have the potential to, if we were to give this concession? Um, that. At the second year. The landlord would have the option to. Basically do away with. Not renting, not giving the renter the appropriate. Rent increase because. Since. On on average, on your example, Nazanin, the the renter who rents. At seven hundred, on average, a seven hundred dollars, um, they would. And in essence, if we, if we talk about. The percentage that we have now, which is five percent, they, the landlord can raise up to five percent. Will this have the potential that they would not do that? They they could go higher? In the second year?
No, so um. This will. Um, it it just sort of impacts the calculation of base rent. Um, as as it's currently written, um, someone who is paying a thousand dollars over the course of a twelve month lease. Um, but has the first month free, their base rent would be one thousand dollars because we're saying the actual term of your tenancy is eleven months. And it's what you paid over those eleven each month over those eleven months. So it'd be a thousand dollars and then whatever the AGA is. You know, let's say it's this year for five percent. So be five, their rent increase would be five percent of a thousand. Um, so it's not going to impact how much the landlord is able to raise the rent. It's just going to impact the the base rent calculation. Um. So, I mean, yes, in in an instance, technically, if uh, if we didn't do this. What would happen as as the regulations are currently written without these amendments, um, it would be, uh, you know. Uh, whatever one, one twelfth of a thousand dollars is, as you said, Karen. Um, that would be subtracted from from the base, base rent. Um. And I don't know that math, but it might be slightly lower. Let's say nine hundred ninety dollars or something like that. Um, and then it would be five percent on the nine hundred and ninety dollars. So it's, it's, it's going to be. A little bit of a difference between what the base rent calculation is. Um, but on the other hand, you know, this is uh. There is an acknowledgement here inherent in it that um, these types of concessions do help tenants who. Have high cost, moving costs going from one apartment to another.
Committee member Roses, you're muted.
I guess it's it's the reoccurring um. Situation, right? No, I was just saying, thank you. I I I got it now. Thanks for the clarification.
Committee member Alma, do you have a question for staff? Before I go to public comment. I think the hand is just left up, so I am going to now go to public comment. Would any member on the of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Staff will display a countdown timer on the screen. And I'm just giving a minute for the hands to get raised. Okay. Cueing up for public comment, I'm going to start with Griffin. Can we promote Griffin?
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Uh, hi, Rental Housing Committee. Uh, I recently moved to Mountain View in twenty twenty-one. My landlord offered a couple months of free rent for my unit upon signing our initial lease. Uh, but not given as actual free months, but implemented as a percentage discount over the first half of my initial tenancy. Before signing this lease, knowing that my apartment was subject to Mountain View rent control. I looked to the protections for tenants under the CSFRA. And it was clear to me that these discounts would be included in the calculation of my base rent. Based on the clear language of the regulation. I signed my lease with this knowledge of how my rent should change. That being said. I am a tenant with a far reduced bargaining power than my landlord, which is a company with hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue. Even if I know the rules, I pessimistically expected that my landlord would simply be able to do as they pleased with my rent. But thankfully, the housing committee's proceedings in these past months have shown that this might not actually be the case, and for this, I am incredibly grateful. Please continue on this path, started with the June twentieth amendments and affirmed with the proposed amendments today. Not just for me, but for the many other Mountain View residents in my situation. If possible, I would humbly request that some more example calculations be uh, included. Um, with different tenancy lengths and styles of rent concession, just to reduce the confusion between landlords and tenants. Maybe this is uh, something that makes sense to include in the. The notice of rent concession. Overall, thank you, staff, for the the well researched and legally supported proposals. Uh, and thank you, committee members, for your commitment to Mountain View renters. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Griffin. And next we'll hear from Oshaka.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, so I am a landlord. I work for a landlord in Mountain View. And I'd really like to thank all of you for really spending a lot of time um, on this issue and for really recognizing the importance of concessions for both. The housing provider and also our residents. Um, we'd like to just make sure that we are all aware that concessions are important sometimes as landlord. Do give more than one month uh, during certain market cycles or through really working with the residents. And we think it's very helpful that the regulation doesn't limit landlords to only offering one month free. But rather any concession or free rent offered during the first to ninety days of the tenancy. Uh, we believe that it's important um. That the regulation and the required forms um, that you'll be producing are clearly communicated and only. Applied to tenancy after a certain date. Uh, the proposed regulation is consistent with the letter and spirit of the. Uh, CSFRA, which recognized that upfront moving cost can be a significant expense for renters. And that concessions really do help address those concerns. And the regulation aims to strike really a balance between the landlord business and the need for clear disclosure. To our tenant about the concessions and how the rent increases will be calculated. So again, we just want to say thank you again. Uh, for your general support of the concept that you're considering, and we'd like to thank um, all of you. Uh, for just really taking the time to work through this issue with the stakeholders and being willing to find a solution. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we'll hear from Edie.
Hello. In general, I support the changes uh, to the definition of base rent that you are considering tonight. So I do respect uh, the comments about needing to stay true to the CSFRA language. And by the language included in the proposed ordinance that talks about. Uh, adapting or you know, how that, how are you going to define the length of the initial tenancy? I think you are. Uh, finding a way to stay faithful enough to the language of the CSFRA. Now, if you can do this for one month, can you do it for two months or many months? Um. I think it's good to keep it short. I think two months might be a good answer. Um, because there's a reason you're talking about this again, and that's for the benefit of. Uh, tenants, which is part of the CSFRA. Uh, tenants are not all good savers and so having to have, when you have a too high rent. But you're trying to scrape together enough money to move and pay the security deposit. You might be prevented from moving to a lower rent situation by the absence of a first month free opportunity. Um, yeah, I won't be upset if you stay with the language you passed the last time, but I think that this is justifiable and beneficial to tenants. I think it's very important that you, in this proposed language, that you're separating the two types of. Uh, concession, the one that is at the beginning versus the one that's over the term. I think you're uh. Separating them and they're very different in terms of confusion possibilities and even abuse possibilities. Um. I hope you move forward with this. I appreciate your looking at this again and. I appreciate uh, that the rental housing committee and you know, all staff are. Uh, and legal advisor saying we must stay true to the CSFRA. But uh, I think carving out this one exception, I find it acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. And next we'll go from Joshua.
Well, good evening, um, members of the committee. My name is Joshua Howard with the California Apartment Association. Let me begin by saying, looking at the timeline that staff presented, we've been at this for quite a while. And tonight, I think we're nearing a result that really strikes a balance for housing providers, for tenants. For the RHC, for the city, and really appreciate the hard work of staff, really appreciate the creativity from. Um, the legal counsel and and the others who brought this forward to you tonight. Um, on behalf of the California Apartment Association, um, we would respectfully request several minor clarifications in. The draft regulation that is before you tonight. Um, couple of them specifically related to some of the definitions, excuse me, examples that are used. Um, may be inconsistent with the regulation, would hope that as you move this forward tonight. You ensure that the examples that are cited in the regulation. Uh, comport with the letter of the regulation, especially around some of the calculations, so that it's consistent for housing providers, for tenants, for hearing officers. Uh, would also ask for some flexibility around the definition of first month. Um, sometimes in that initial month, some housing providers do structure their rental agreements in such a way where a tenant moves in on September fifteenth. The first month rent is September fifteen to October fifteen, and a prorated portion is paid from October fifteen to October thirty-first. And then in November first, the regular cycle of payments begins. Um, so would ask that you consider that so that it comports with how several housing providers, both mom and pops and others, uh, structured their lease agreements in the city. And also would ask that you do give consideration to allowing up to two months of free rent. As the previous speaker just stated, oftentimes concessions are used to help offset moving costs. And we know that moving can be challenging, it can be expensive, and upfront concessions are a key tool. And the CSFRA itself recognized that moving is costly, especially when one has to come up with a first month's rent, a security deposit. And other um, expenses. So. In light of the comments you've heard tonight, in light of the hard work, California Apartment Association would respectfully request that you do move this forward. But do give consideration to allowing up to two months of. Rent in the initial lease term as a concession and ensure that there is clear guidance as to when this regulation takes effect. And that it only applies prospectively um, for tenants that as staff indicated begins. Um, on or after September first of this year. Um, again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your work and through this. Back and forth with landlords, with tenants, with um, staff and the RHC members. We're arriving at a result which it sounds like um, meets the needs of the city's housing providers and renters. So thank you for your consideration and look forward to this moving tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joshua. And next we'll hear from Teresa.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Chair. Um, I I just, I I I find myself in a situation where I actually agree with every speaker that's spoken tonight. Um, and it and it, it feels really nice um, that the committee and staff is. Has stayed open to the input um, from all sides. Um, I I would echo um, the the thinking that two months. Uh, upfront rent concession be considered. I I do think it's, it's the proper balance. Um, and um, I I also just wanted to reiterate that I think. This concept of the first full month might pose some administrative challenges and. Um, you know, I I heard um, staff council say that it was meant to sort of. Head off administrative difficulties, but I, but I actually think it might um. It might create them from a, from an administrative standpoint, so. The request would be whether that could be modified to to reflect a concession. So the request would be whether that could be modified to reflect a concession given within the first, you know, 30 or 60 days, whatever, whatever, you know, language seems to make the most sense. But again, thank you all. Really appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Teresa. And next we'll move to Anna.
Hi there. Good evening. I would like to echo comments that have already been made expressing appreciation for the very thorough and considered approach that the rental housing committee and staff have taken to this issue. I you know, also concur with comments that have been made expressing that the carve out that's being considered tonight for upfront concessions benefits both landlords and tenants. I'd like to speak to a particular concern that has been raised tonight and also at previous meetings about whether the amendment is really faithful to the CSFRA. I believe that this proposal is actually the most faithful of all that we have seen because excluding upfront concessions is in keeping with the definition of rent as being the periodic payment, i.e. the payment that is made repeatedly month over month, with the first month effectively just falling out because no payment is made. I also agree with comments by the CAA and others that the proposed, there might be some administrative difficulties around the narrow definition of the first month. But all in all, I'm very grateful for this well reasoned compromise position on a really important issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I don't think anyone heard you what you left said.
Oh, sorry about that. I said, thank you to Anna, and I said, we're going to upgrade Stephen to a participant so he can provide his comments.
Thank you very much. If you can hear me now. And, okay. One of the problems that I've been having regarding a lot of the talk here is that supposedly Joshua said that there would be administrative problems. Well, I understand regarding the way rents are supposed to be handled is they're supposed to be prorated regarding the total monthly rent and the amount of days they have for a period. In that case, then, for example, as he explained, if someone moved into an apartment on the 15th, then their rent collection would be based on only 15 days of the rent and not the entire rent. And it would be very simply applied in the future if they were trying to be given 30 days of free rent. That means the next month they would only be charged for 15 days of rent for that month and then moving forward. So that explanation didn't seem to pass muster in my point of view. The real issue that seems to be going on again, and I've observed it in my building, is the idea that you get a teaser rate. And then now these teaser rates are now being asked to be considered non-based rents. And in this case, I really do not believe that that can be allowed. Again, the CSFRA was very clear on that, and you can only modify the CSFRA as long as the text of the CSFRA is not overridden. And in this case, again, the text of the CSFRA does clearly say that the base rent is the actual rent paid. And if that's the case, then in effect, yes, your original decision and your original regulation that was passed was in perfect connection with the CSFRA. And yes, I know that it makes things a little bit more complicated for renters and landlords. But again, this kind of situation is a situation where people should be putting in the proper consideration before they take their actions. And in this case, then, I would say that, again, there are ways of doing that, but trying to carve out a middle ground when there is none in the actual text of the actual charter, that's a different story. You're actually going beyond what the charter originally defined. The only way you can do that technically is to go and actually have a ballot measure written so that the CSFRA can actually be modified by the voters. And so in my book, I'm simply saying, this is the wrong venue to take these actions. This could be easily argued in court as being going in excess of what the committee can do, given the text of the CSFRA. And it could wind up with a lot of major issues regarding legal litigation. So I would again strongly urge that the original regulations that were adopted be upheld. And any modifications of this type should be actually put into a ballot measure in the future.
Thank you, Stephen. And next we have Sky.
Hi, y'all. I just wanted to again say thank you to the staff, especially. I know how much you went through to put this all together. I wanted to address a couple of things that Stephen said and also what Griffin said. I think that what you have proposed is amazing, lovely. I get maybe saying 30 days instead of a month for ease. I'm not really actually sure how that would all work out. But, you know, Griffin's issue and Stephen's issue, in reality, is that prorated rent issue where that free months was actually prorated and was basically a fake way to lower rents. And this actually provides landlords and tenants to do the the industry standard one month free rent that enables people to move in. So it takes care of everyone in a good, strong way. I think it will create a foundation for great tenancy and for people who are of middle and lower income to still be able to move into Mountain View, which is hugely important. Lastly, to address Stephen's concern about the legal issues, the staff's legal team has done a great job of looking into this and understanding this and has not and would not recommend this if it was not in keeping with the CSFRA and legally correct to do so. As Anna mentioned, the rents that are, we're looking at are periodic payments, i.e. monthly payments. So it is in keeping with that. There's also other ways to look at it as far as, I think, like kind. I'm not sure exactly how the the staff constructed it. I'm not a lawyer, but I do know a number of lawyers have looked at this and that they all agree that this is within keeping and actually more in keeping with the CSFRA than previous because it's truly taking care of the tenant and in keeping with the goals and intentions of this law and why the Mountain View residents voted for it, which is to have a healthy community that people can live in and move into. And yeah, just thank you, thank you, thank you. Really happy with what you did. And I think this is the right thing for Mountain View.
Thank you, Sky. And next we'll hear from Alex.
Hey, friends. So I'm not a fancy mathematician, but I am someone who will half ironically propose that we move to a duodecimal base 12 number system to make things like this easier. Because I get that, you know, 1/12 being 8.3% repeating. It's complicated. I appreciate staff pointing out that a $750 base rent, if you got a 25% concession on a $1,000 a month rent for your first year, is the same as, you know, getting three months free. But then the same case if you got, you know, 8% off and your base rent became, you know, 9,166-ish after the first year. There's nothing special about three months out of 12 being discounted versus one out of 12 being discounted. The rent paid during the initial term of the tenancy is the rent paid during the initial term of the tenancy. And adding special cases for any number, any arbitrary number, is a violation of the text of the CSFRA. I mean, it's nice. It makes people like, you know. It makes the landlords happy, but it's a violation of the text of the law that the people in the city voted for, which is the rent paid during the initial term of the tenancy. So, I mean, you can pretend that some math is different than others. That's not how numbers work. But again, base 12, you know, just add two digits. Makes a lot more numbers divisible by other numbers cleanly. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we are next going to go into committee deliberations and provide feedback. So a motion to approve should include reading the following items to adopt the amendments to the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act and the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance Regulations, Chapter 2, to further clarify the calculation of base rent where a rent concession is offered in the first month of tenancy during an initial term of tenancy. And maybe we could get that up on the screen as folks are thinking and talking. And I see a hand from Vice Chair Ramos.
Quick question to staff. Is it easier to say 30 days than one month? Or 60 days instead of two months? Would that make things easier with how how they're defining that free month? Language is difficult.
I just think it gets complicated where you, the person moves in on February 14th and all of a sudden you have a month that's a different length than the other months. So saying the first full month seems cleaner. And I think, you know, maybe landlords can meet us halfway and structure that and then charge things the way that they want to charge things. But, you know, ultimately, it's up to the rental housing committee if they want to do 30 or 60 days.
But logistically, is that? Like, is there any kind of difference in the regulation? I know that we're kind of rubber banding, stretching this rubber band of our regulations as much as we can. And I'm really sorry and thank you, staff, for being really nice about this.
Well, I think this is the issue. I mean, if you want to say, you know, 30 days, not all months have 30 days. So then we're going to be counting days instead of months, and that does make it very complicated for tenants. If the month has 31 days, then is there like one day of rent of the month if we use 30 days? So I think it's easier to use months for everybody.
Okay. I think I understand that, and I think I'm just going to accept that for what it is. However, I am open to two months since that's as much as we could stretch a rubber band. Three months is probably a no. I see a few more no's. So I'm going to, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the amendments to the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act and Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance Regulations, Chapter 2, to further clarify the calculation of base rent where a rent concession is offered in the first month, in the first two months of tenancy. I think that's one minor change during the initial term of tenancy. I don't know if I did that right. If you're understanding that I'm asking for two months instead of one.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So on your motion, are you trying to motion that the rent concession could be offered in the first two months? Meaning you could do one month, but it could be in month one or month two? Are you trying to say there can be up to two months rent concession offered over two months?
I am saying up to two months rent concession. But everything else is going to stay the same.
During the first two months of the tenancy?
Yes.
And sorry to further clarify that you would want the initial term of the tenancy to then be reduced by two months so that the base rent calculation?
The concession allowed can be up to two months. I'm not assuming that a tenant is going to get a two month concession. This is something that obviously the landlord will have to offer, but that is at most what can be offered, if that makes sense.
Right. But if the landlord offers a two month concession and it's a six month term, then for determining base rent, we would use four months of rent.
Yes.
And a four month term to calculate rent. I think that's the question that Nas is asking.
We would have six month terms. I mean, they can't raise the rent after the six months.
Right, but there are six month terms.
And then they just leave after six months?
They can. So we just want to clarify that. So that's what you're saying. Okay.
Okay. Do I have a second for that specific motion before we discuss?
Sorry, one other point of clarification. This is in the agenda as two separate resolutions. So these, for the CSFRA and MHRSO, there should be two separate motions made.
I think she made a motion for both.
Yes.
They're identical. I think that's fine.
Oh, okay. And then the last piece is just whether there had been a question about clarifying when folks want the notices to start going out with leases and whether that changed, that if you do want that change to be in there, it needs to be a part of the motion.
You mean per September 1st, 2022, starting?
Yeah.
I had my hand raised before Vice Chair Ramos made the motion.
Oh, okay. So do we have a second or because that's what we need to discuss the motion, right? Or we can let it die?
A question about the motion? You know, even though I wouldn't be-
Without a second?
We don't-
Okay.
Yeah, we can't talk about the motion unless we have a second. I am not seeing a second, so I believe that motion dies. Okay, but Committee Member Alman, you have comments you wanted to provide.
Well, my question really had to do with the month and the question of whether someone comes in, say, February 15th. Are we saying that the one month would be as of March 1st? That one month is the concession?
That's correct. The landlord would have, in order to qualify under this as part of the exception, they would have to offer the concession for the month of March.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff-recommended one-month concession as the base rent going forward. I don't know if that's the appropriate language, but-
So are you motioning to adopt what staff proposed today for seven months? Okay.
For both the CSFRA and MHRSO?
Yes.
And do you mind adding from September 1 onwards noticing? Would you like to add that?
Yes, I would like to add that.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, I'll second it because I'd like to discuss it. So with regards to the motion on the table, I think that we at minimum also need to clean up the examples. It's been brought up a couple of times in public comment and it is a valid comment. a valid comment, I believe, that the examples in the regulations we passed last month would not all be germane if we pass the motion that's now on the table. So at minimum, I think there's a round, room for a friendly amendment there possibly if Chair Almond is supportive of it to make sure that the examples are clear.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
Excellent, excellent. And then my thoughts are, if there was something else that I would do here to out of deference for the fact that the partials, you know, if you move in on July eighteen, let's just say, and your month of free is August first to August thirtieth or thirty-first, whatever amount of days August has. Do we want to make the language first month's free or discounted rent where the first month must occur in the first sixty days following the start of the rental agreement? So it would still limit to one month, but it would allow sixty days to have it? No.
I don't understand. Can you clarify what, what you're suggesting?
Sure. So let's say that I'm moving in tomorrow to a property. And for bookkeeping purposes, my landlord says, I'm going to give you a free month. It's from July nineteenth till August eighteen. And then I pay a prorated August. Under the current regulations as drafted, there's no flexibility to do that. So I would pay a prorated July. And then I would get one month free in August, and then I would be back to normal four months, starting in September. If the idea here is that the concession really helps the tenant with the moving costs by having them pay the prorated July in that example, they are in essence paying more upfront than if they could wait to August. So it allows them at least one more pay cycle, if not two, before they have to start paying rent. If they're on a bi, uh, bi-monthly pay.
I, I just think that's, makes it very, very complicated for people to understand. I, I don't know, but I like to keep it as clean as possible.
So the accepted friendly amendment was to clean up the examples?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Committee Member Greenwell, did you have comments you wanted to provide or something else?
I actually had very similar questions to what you've just been discussing. So, um, I, it's, it's about the stub period, essentially, right? That the partial, any partial months. Um, I do think we should clean up the examples and just be clear about how, um, yeah, how, how, how that should, how that should be done. And to the committee, I mean, do we, um, again, if it did, let's say it's September fifteenth, and the, the landlord says, um, okay, September fifteenth to, um, October first, I'm going to give you free and I'm going to give you the first month free because it's a partial, and then I'm going to give you the first month, first full month free. If I'm understanding correctly, would we treat that? Would we treat that differently than, than, would that be, that would be over and above the one month that's allowed? And so then that, that part, that stub one month would be, I think, um, part of the calculation. And if so, um, do we need to change our calculations instead of being monthly then to like over three hundred sixty-five days? Right? Because if, if the prorated amount was like for that, for that partial month, I, I need more information, I think, to understand, like, if they had, if they, let's imagine this has already happened. Let's say, say that a forty-five-day, um, concession was already given to someone, and it's going to apply, uh, that, that happened, uh, last month, let's say. So it's already been done. How does that calculation, how does base rent get calculated in that situation if there was a partial month that's prorated? But the, but the twelve-month period didn't start in their mind, in the, in the landlord's mind, the twelve-month period didn't start until September first, but no.
Well, you're like, if I can clarify, twelve months is twelve months from the start of the lease. I also understand, but I can be corrected, is that landlords usually use the term months and do not differ the rent, whether it's a month is thirty days or thirty-one days or twenty-nine days. But I might be incorrect. So in that regard, I think using the term month might be actually easier.
I think that's correct. I think we would potentially be really complicating this for tenants if we did a daily rate.
Yeah.
I think that, that, then we have to figure out the number of days in the term. If it's not a year, that will differ depending on the month. So it can be done, but the notice will be more complicated than you've requested, Committee Member Greenwell.
That, that's fair. I mean, I, I think, uh, I think to the, without changing, I, I can't make amendments anyway to the, uh, motion, but I, I guess I would just ask that uh, we clarify those examples, uh, because I think people will, there have already been leases that have been written giving concessions in different time periods, and we want to make sure that they're able to calculate base rent accurately. So, um, if you get a whole smattering of examples, I think that'd be good.
So I can understand your question a little bit better. I'm going to use a full two months. Are you asking in the instance where someone gets a full two-month discount, whether that would still be calculated over eleven months or if it would be calculated over? Is it, um, so are we, is your question that we're removing the first month completely? Because I mean, there are two ways, so, so there's two sort of positions to take on this, where if someone gets two or three months free, then you just calculate it over twelve months. Or if they get two or three months free, then you calculate it over eleven months, taking into consideration this one month that, um, we're allowing a grace period, essentially.
Yeah, I think, I think my intent is, is more just, um, I think, uh, common practice, one month has been counter-practice. I think we've, we've all, uh, heard about that. I'm not sure, and I, I would leave it to the committee to, or the rest of the committee to, um, determine how much more, uh, uh, how much more seems reasonable, where it's not going into rent manipulation. That's really what we're talking about. It's like, there's a rent concession that's offsetting moving costs, and that's a move-in special. And that can, that commonly, what I've seen is thirty days. Uh, but I could see how there could be a stub period of additional ten days, and then like forty days is probably reasonable or something. But at three months, I think we're all saying like, that goes into rent manipulation. You're doing something where you're really trying to like reduce that rent. So for the committee, maybe the best way is to, um, to get through this is to, is to say, what do we feel like is the max number of reason, days that are reasonable for a move-in special that we feel like are offsetting costs but are not manipulating rent? And then backtrack into how do you make that a reg that, that works for, um, partial months, stub months? Whether the first month was free or the second month was free, um, I would almost leave that to staff, uh, to, to kind of figure out those details, but the, but the committee should say how many days they think are, um, reasonable offsetting moving costs as opposed to like rent manipulation.
So right now on the table is a motion that, um, speaks of one free month.
And I guess my question, um, for clarity, because I will have to make these changes and the cleanups if this motion passes, um, is maybe more so to the, to the chair's, um, friendly amendment of cleaning up the examples. Um, I, I guess my question is which example do you feel does not uh, speak to this? And is it the two-months free one? Because you think that it should be calculated over eleven months. Is that right? Is that the position that the committee is taking?
My viewpoint is I think it is valuable to have the two-month example, but I think you need a one-month example as well.
Okay.
So you would, yes, you would calculate the, the existing two-month over eleven months, but then you would also have one that has one month free showing a thousand. Like, you see where I'm going with that now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean about cleaning up the examples. It's just making it very clear that one month is with this, with the current motion, one month is permissible. Two months, you're going to have a calculation to be done there. So, and, and maybe it even goes on the notice form too, but I leave that up to staff. So Committee Member Almond, do you have something else you wanted to cover before we let Committee Member Rosas make comments, and then maybe we can vote?
Yeah, very brief. I, I just wanted to say that this was the most delightful public comment that we've had on this issue, um, that's been percolating for almost six months. And it, I, when, when we find agreement from so many landlords that they're okay with a one-month concession, and we have tenants also saying the same thing, I think we should honor their, um, thoughts and, and their, um, very sweet comments that, that, you know, the staff and, uh, attorneys are doing a great job, and we should proceed with the, um, motion as stated.
Thank you. I want to give Committee Member Rosas a chance to make her comment if she still wants to.
I don't want to add more time to this meeting, so I will just agree with, um, Member Almond.
Excellent. Very good. And I think we can call a vote because we have an open motion on the table.
Could you restate what the motion is with the amendments?
Do you want me to do it, or do you want Committee Member Almond to do it?
I think staff could do it. So the motion is to adopt amendments to the CSFRA and the MHRSO Regulations, Chapter Two, to further clarify the calculation of base rent where a rent concession is offered in the first month of a tenancy during the initial term of the tenancy. Uh, with a revision to those regulations to make it clear that the notice will, um, only be required commencing September first, two thousand twenty-two. Any further revision that the examples will clarify, uh, this action.
Okay, can we call the vote?
Committee Member Pardo De Zella?
Aye.
Committee Member Rosas?
Aye.
Committee Member Almond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Chair Hane Lucy?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. Okay. So we have that done, and now moving right along. Thank you to the committee members and staff for that good deliberation, and thank you to the public for the good comments. We will now move to committee staff announcements and updates. I hand it back to staff for some presentations.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect. All right, so now we'll look at the upcoming workshops, clinics, and office hours. Agenda item eight point one. So first, I would like to speak a little bit about the Housing and Eviction Help Center. We are having our third Thursday of the month, Housing and Eviction Help Center this week. So that will be in-person at the library. We're on the first floor in the program room. We also have availability online through Zoom. If people aren't able to come in person, they can join at mountainview.gov slash eviction help clinics. So again, this is the first and third, third Thursday of each month at the library from one to five P M. And we have information and, um, in-person representatives from various community partners that we have that, um, can talk to people about our rent stabilization law, how to apply for affordable housing, um, connection with rental assistance program. And we're also still helping people check their COVID-nineteen rent relief statuses online. We also provide eviction help, so we answer questions about eviction protections. Uh, if people are receiving or planning to serve eviction notices and get help understanding sort of what are the next steps in that process. There are also, uh, representatives from CLESPA for our legal resources that people can get connected to. They join virtually on Zoom from two to four, uh, every single Housing and Eviction Help Center. And we also have other sort of general resources from different programs that we connect to, so you can get information about food distribution, different sorts of financial assistance, our mediation program, and different homelessness prevention services and mental health services and things like that. So that will be this coming Thursday at the library. Aside from that, we're also having some workshops and webinars. So this Tuesday tomorrow, I believe, yeah, we're having a landlord-focused rent and rent increases webinar. So we'll focus on the AGA and other types of rent increases that are allowed under the CSFRA. That will be tomorrow at three o'clock through Zoom. I don't think we have the website here, but it's mountainview.gov slash R S P webinars, if people want to join that. We also then on Wednesday have a tenant-focused bilingual webinar, rent, rent increases, and talking a little bit about rent decrease petitions. Um, so we'll have that on Wednesday at six thirty P M on Zoom as well. And then finally, we are having a hybrid meeting. So in-person and over Zoom at the Housing and Eviction Help Center on Thursday from the last hour, four to five o'clock. We'll be transforming the help center into a workshop, and we'll be having a representative from the Housing Department in Mountain View talk about um, preparing to apply for below-market rate apartments and affordable housing. And that also will be bilingual, English and Spanish. We'll be doing it in-person and streaming over Zoom. People can join both ways. Will be our first hybrid attempt at any workshop, so we're very excited to see how it goes. Any questions about that?
Any questions from the committee? Oh, I see one from Vice Chair Ramos.
Um, considering how our appeal went this, uh, earlier this meeting, are we having any, uh, workshop, upcoming workshops about habitability again? I feel like that's something that just needs to constantly, uh, be reviewed.
I don't have the workshop schedule off the top of my head, but I can definitely check and send you the schedule that we have for the year, and if it's not on there, we can look at maybe adding in.
Yeah, and I want to add to that, that it's definitely a once-a-year topic that comes back in our annual workshop schedule.
Yeah, we have one every year, tenant-focused and landlord-focused.
This is an, an interesting thing. Is there any way for us to be notified when there is a new landlord? Uh, is it like when they like file the new registry kind of thing, like, hey, you're a new landlord, you should take this workshop?
Uh, we do track that when properties are being sold. We look for the new owner, and we make sure we add the contact information that we get from the uh, county into our mailing list so that they get all of our communications that we send out, all the postcards, all the letters, um, all, all of our mail communications.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, are there any additional comments or announcements from committee, committee member or city staff? Okay. Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned at nine thirty P M on the dot. The next Rental Housing Committee meeting is scheduled to be held on Monday, August eighth, at seven P M. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention tonight. Have a wonderful night.